I'm gonna call to order the March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Can everybody please stand for a pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt Nate's agenda?
I'll make motion to adopt Nate's agenda.
Second it.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda. Item number four point oh, public hearing. Amendments to the city code of ordinance reg- regulating boards, committees, commissions, and authorities and definitions and rules of construction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was introduced and discussed at the February sixth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Discussion focused on the need to clarify the selection procedure for the city code for boards, committees, and commissions and provide remedies to those situations in which council does not confirm recommendations of appointment. This item is referred to the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three city council meeting for further discussion, but was tabled to finalize the definition of resident for inclusion as an amendment to chapter one, section one dash two. The addition of an affidavit of residency was added as an additional means to address these concerns. This proposal was discussed at the March thirteenth council meeting, but tabled in the March twenty-seventh meeting to address final changes to the definition section of this consideration. Staff request that city council conduct a public hearing at tonight's meeting to amend city code, chapter two, article four, section two seventy-one, and chapter one, section one-two. At the conclusion of the hearing, council has requested to consider amending the ordinance regulating boards, committees, and commissions, which is section two seventy-one, and definition and rules of construction, section one dash two, as exhibited in attachment four, as ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one. So any improvements for a motion should be to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, if that's the direction of council.
With that, I'll open the public hearing for ordinance amendment. Is there anybody that'd like to come up and speak? I will close the public here on ordinance amendment. Is there a motion for?
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
I second it.
Motion made, second discussion. Does the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Item B, public hearing. Ordinance amendment. City ordinance, chapter ten, article five, section ten dash one fifty-one, are farm animal amendments.
Staff is requested by council to develop a proposal for discussion of amendment to city ordinance, chapter ten, article five, farm animals as to the keeping of chickens and planted subdivisions on lots of less than three acres and any other concerns within the ordinance. This matter was presented to city council on February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three for discussion. City council person Miller requested the ordinance be reviewed for additional revisions beyond the recommendation of exempting chickens from the animals regulated by the ordinance on lots and planted subdivisions. Council person Miller submitted a revised version of the ordinance for consideration. The summary of these changes are as follows. These changes revise the ordinance to eliminate the permit fee requirements, align the ordinance with current norms of resident behavior, clarify the language of the ordinance, and update the terminology used in the ordinance to reflect agricultural and animal husbandry context. Additionally, the minimum allowable flock size has been doubled, and the rules regarding roosters have been adjusted to ensure all rural properties are included in the rural zoning rules. Council person Miller's recommendations were discussed at the March sixth, twenty twenty-three council work meeting, and council directed staff to incorporate the changes discussed and advertise and hold a public hearing for amending this ordinance at tonight's meeting. Staff is requesting that council hold a public hearing to discuss revisions to the ordinance as exhibited in attachments one and two, and consider approving the changes to city ordinance, chapter ten, article five, section ten dash fifty-one, farm animals.
With that, I'll open the public, public hearing for ordinance amendment, uh, for the farm animals amendments. Is there anybody?
I would just ask, Rita Belgium, I would just ask that you revisit the roosters because they're pretty irritating and you can't keep the noise within the confines of your own yard. So if it's a little harder to get roosters, that's not a big issue. It just seems like you made it a lot easier for people to have roosters. And I would prefer not all six of my neighbors have roosters that I have to listen to. So thank you.
Good evening. Don Johnson, Okinawa Street, lived here twenty-one years. I don't want a rooster, but I don't want anybody to tell me that I can't have a rooster. I would like twelve chickens, though. That would be great on my two-acre parcel that is totally enclosed where I can't see anybody and they can't see me. I like it that way. That's why we've moved out here from Coon Rapids. Excited about the opportunity to be able to do this for myself and not have to depend on somebody else for eggs, not have to go to the store and buy eggs. I'm a big girl and I know I can handle this project. I know I can do it. I'm smart enough to do it. I was a little bit peeved at the meeting when you guys were talking about this, and it was mentioned that give people an inch and they'll take a mile. That sounded so authoritarian to me and not what I think should be coming out of the mouth of people who are here to serve us. I'm a big girl and I know that just because something is legal doesn't mean I have to partake in it. There's a lot of things in this state that are legal that I don't think are good for me. I don't think owning a rooster is the right thing for me, but I don't want to take anybody else's right away to do that. It's just, you live next to people, you gotta deal with noise. I don't have any kids at my house, but I gotta listen to my neighbor who had seven kids. I'm not gonna tell her she can't have those kids because they're loud and noisy. So I just like you take that into consideration. Just because you make something legal by ordinance doesn't mean everybody's gonna rush out and do it. I would, I wouldn't be surprised if I'm the only one in my neighborhood who does this. So, and that's fine because I'll have my eggs and I'll be happy. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Yeah, a motion that we adopt it.
What about the roosters? If they take a bow of silence without their?
I know they taste good.
Get a muzzle.
Taste good.
Thinking.
You're thinking? You're contemplating roosters?
Yeah, that's what I did. I didn't know if he's going to do anything or?
I think I'm gonna leave it.
I'll second.
Motion made, second discussion. The motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item C, Onoka County Sheriff's report. Derek?
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Tim? We got another public hearing for C.
Oh, I don't have that one on here.
Oh, I'll step back.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't have this. On mine, I didn't, I only have the two. I'm sorry. Public hearing for par- partial vacation of drainage and utility easement. Four, five, five, six, two hundred twenty-fourth Avenue. See, I don't have it.
I got it on mine. No.
Got a new, uh?
When did this jump in?
That was sent out about an hour after the original one was sent out as an update.
Yeah, I, I downloaded mine from the website, so it was on mine.
That was sent out on Thursday afternoon.
Yeah. Yeah, just downloaded what Kerry, what Kerry sent us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So much for jumping the gun, huh?
Mr. President, members of the council, uh, back on February thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, uh, you guys held a public hearing for a partial easement vacation at forty-five eighty-four to twenty-fourth northeast. Uh, tonight's applicant, uh, spoke at that public hearing and requested that his easement, uh, be partially vacated as well. He did come in subsequently and dropped off an application, um, to request a, this, you guys consider a partial vacation of the easement on his property. City staff, uh, received the completed application, uh, and is requesting that you hold a public hearing and consider the partial vacation easement. I'm more than happy to go through all of the documentation that we did less than a month ago, if you'd like, on the plat from nineteen seventy-five and the, um, hundred and, um... Well, let me just, I'll go through it. You guys can stop me if you, if you've heard enough or heard it all over again. In nineteen seventy-five, as part of the preliminary plat process of the Oak Meadows Estates subdivision, the city engineer recommended that easements for future streets be included in a plat. The easement and the recommendations were defined as an area of the abutting lots and that the center line of the street be lot line, be lot line between two lots, and that a thirty-three-foot wide drainage easement be provided off of both lots, making a total width of sixty-six feet, and that further quick claim deed be executed in the name of the city to cover the road easements along the thirty-three feet of each lot abutting the future street. In nineteen seventy-eight, the final plat for Oak Meadows Estates was recorded and is included, uh, for review. As part of the recorded final plat in nineteen seventy-eight, ten fifty-eight-foot wide drainage and utility easements were recorded on abutting lots throughout the subdivision, creating five hundred and sixteen-foot wide drainage and utility easements. No quick claim deeds can be located for any of the parcels in this subdivision. Uh, it was the opinion of the East Bethel city attorney back in, um, early March, or excuse me, early February, uh, that the inclusion of a drainage and utility easement on a recorded plat makes it a valid easement. Uh, although today drainage and utility easements with, widths can vary from one subdivision to the next based on uniqueness, topography, drainage, construction, ditches. The standard easement in our rural residential is a ten-foot width on abutting properties, creating a total of a twenty-foot width easement. Additionally, current residential road standards in East Bethel would call for a total of a sixty-six foot right away, matching the recommendations of the engineer back in nineteen seventy-five. Uh, the forty-acre parcel of land abutting the south lot line of the property at four, five, five, six, two twenty-fourth Avenue Northeast is adjacent to a portion of the eight hundred and fifty-nine point nine-two acre Gordy Nicholson Wildlife Management Area. The city has no future plans to construct roads in this easement location, and there are no existing connector streets south of this subdivision. Public Works Director and the city engineer were asked to review the request, request of the proposed vacation of the drainage, portion of the drainage and utility easement. Um, the only comment I received back was the Public Works Director who, uh, was in agreement that the, the partial vacation, uh, would be acceptable, matching the one that just happened on the east lot right next door. Um, so we are requesting to hold a public hearing and consider the approval of the vacated, to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility easement at four, five, five, six, two twenty-fourth Avenue Northeast with conditions set forth in attachment twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
With that, I'll open a public hearing for partial vacation of drainage and utility easement for four, five, five, six, two hundred twenty-fourth Avenue Northeast. Anybody here would like to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve vacationing a portion of the drainage and utility easement located at four, five, five, six, two twenty-fourth Avenue with conditions set forth in resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen. Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Does the motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Now, Derek, it's up. I apologize.
It's all right. I don't, uh, February was quiet. Um, we had three hundred and sixty calls for service. Uh, that was up approximately thirty reports from the previous month of January. We responded to sixty medicals, one assault, and two damage to property calls. Deputies made twenty arrests for miscellaneous violations, and our traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of seventeen traffic citations. Uh, a few of our notable calls last month, uh, on the seventh of February at two fifteen in the morning, Deputy Madsen responded to a personal injury accident at Viking and Jackson. A passerby reported that there had been a white SUV stuck in the snowbank and that the driver was unresponsive inside of that car. On arrival, our deputies located the driver unhurt, but he was still sleeping in the driver's seat. Uh, unfortunately, this male had to be physically roused using a sternum rub. It's a technique that we use to get people, um, to respond to our commands. Our fire friends here as well, um, understand that maneuver. Uh, the driver eventually exited the car and exhibited signs of alcohol impairment. The male performed standardized field sobriety testing and subsequently failed. He PBT to a point one-seven and was arrested and transported to the sheriff's office, where he submitted to a DMT test, which reported a value of point one-six. Male was transported to jail and released to detention staff. He was later charged with third-degree DWI. Uh, a day later, Deputy Seefolk at six fifteen PM stopped a vehicle for speeding near University and two hundred and thirty-seventh. Uh, while speaking with the driver, he noticed signs of alcohol impairment and asked the driver to step out to perform standardized field sobriety testing, which she did and ultimately failed. The female driver PBT to a point two-four and was arrested for DWI. She was transported to ACSO and again submitted to a DMT test, which reported a final value of point two-one. Due to a prior driving offense within the last ten years, she was eventually charged with second-degree DWI and booked into our jail. On the eighteenth, at one fifteen PM, Deputy Quam stopped a vehicle in the twenty-seven-hundred block of Viking after observing it failed to signal its turn into the parking lot of the recycling center. After the vehicle came to a stop, the male driver exited the vehicle and angrily started walking back toward Deputy Quam. Deputy Quam told the male to stop and get back into his truck, which he did. Deputy Quam approached the vehicle and tried to speak with the driver, who was irate and continually argued with our deputies. The male driver refused to identify himself and was argumentative and failed to comply with any directives that had been given to him by our staff. At this point, we radioed for backup and advised the male if, if he was to continue to refuse to identify himself, he would later be arrested. The male continued to yell and refused to identify himself, and he was ultimately told that he was under arrest and removed from the vehicle without incident. Uh, he was arrested for obstructing legal process. The male was cited for driving without a valid license, failing to use a turn signal, and then again, of course, obstructing the legal process. He was later booked into our jail. Finally, on the twenty-third of February at two o'clock in the morning, deputies Wickland and Dewey responded to an address in the twenty-four-hundred block of two hundred and sixteenth Avenue Northeast on a report of a schizophrenic person out of control inside of the home. On arrival, deputies made entry into the house to determine what was happening. Pond making entry, a male without warning punched Deputy Wickland squarely in the face. Deputy Wickland and Dewey were able to bring this male under control and were successful into safely getting him into handcuffs. They later secured the scene. The male was later transported to the hospital for further psychiatric care and was later charged with assaulting a police officer in the course of their duties. So thankfully, nobody was injured in that situation. Um, that will conclude my brief for February. We've got some warmer temperatures coming, so I would caution everybody out on, out on Coon Lake and our local waters to, to pay attention to those ice conditions. Um, I know the pond in the back of my house and and over there is starting to melt, so please be careful if you're out on the lake. Um, and then again, our thefts were down, but with the warming weather, we'll see more foot traffic. This is where things start to ramp up throughout the year. So if you see anything that needs immediate police assistance or, or response to check on someone that's just not acting appropriately out in public, please give us a call. We'll send somebody out there to take a look. So, thank you, council, for allowing me the chance to, to brief on our past month's activities. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the city council?
I, I do have a question for you. Uh, with the two DWIs, one was a third degree, another was a second degree. What's the difference between those degrees? What would be, is there a first degree, fourth degree?
Yeah, a first degree is a subsequent fourth violation in ten years. So there's, there's two standards that we use. One is the, is the high, uh, breath alcohol concentration, and then the second is how many priors that this person has within ten years. So when a DWI arrest is made, we need to determine what their criminal history will show within the last ten years, and then ultimately what, uh, that breath test resulted in. So anything above a one-six is gonna automatically, um, constitute a gross misdemeanor level crime. Anything over twice the legal limit is gonna automatically bump that up to a gross misdemeanor. If you have a secondary qualifying offense within that ten-year period of time, it bumps up to a second. So, um, certain things that we have to process during the course of our investigation, that, that DWI arrest, um, something that we do frequently, all too frequently, unfortunately. However, there are certain boxes that we must check when we're, when we're making those arrests to figure out exactly what it is that we need to charge this person with. So, the only way that you can get to a fourth degree, or I'm sorry, a first degree is by having four qualifying DWI events within ten years.
Okay. Derek, what you don't hear much about is phone scams. You, are you guys getting a lot of calls on that?
Yeah, um, unfortunately, and that's, those are one of those things where if it happens in our area, we'll take a look at it. But a lot of times what we do is we document. We want phone numbers. We want as much information as folks can get from these other people on the line, depending on what they'll give you. Um, and we document it, we keep a log, and then we've got federal partners that are interested in that, you know. Uh, Better Business Bureau does things of that nature, the FBI, HSI. A lot of our federal partners want to know about those things because our jurisdiction will end outside of Minnesota, and then ultimately, a lot of these scams, uh, occur across state lines. And at that point, our federal partners usually pick those up, or they'll at least do a little bit of checking to see exactly what it is that we're looking for. And ultimately, it ends up to be something that's got, I like to say, it's got long legs, right? It goes all over the country. It's very expansive, very vast, could even be overseas. And at that point, our involvement will ultimately end. But if we can collect that information and give you a little bit of peace of mind, all of our staff are well-trained in taking those fraud reports. And if you call, we'll give you a case number. Um, you can give us a brief synopsis of exactly what it is that this person said to you or what they were asking for. And then, of course, we document it. We'll give you some tips, you know, pay attention to your financial assets, pay attention to your bank statements, credit cards, things of that nature. Um, and usually ninety percent of the time, that's where it ends, thankfully. Um, so that's kind of how we approach those. But yes, we, we do get those quite often.
Okay, yeah, one of our local businesses was hit for about four thousand dollars last week. I talked to the owner, so I'm just kinda curious where they are.
Okay, did they report that? Do you know?
Yeah, I think they did, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Any questions from the audience?
Well, I have a question. What about email and texting?
Same, yeah. Yep, we do, certainly. Uh, keep record of those. I know text messages are easy to keep record. Um, screenshot them, keep records of your, of your emails as well. You can certainly print those off, um, and we can assist you with that. Make a report, and then we'll get it to the appropriate investigator, and they can determine whether or not we're gonna take a look at it, whether it's worth our time. We, we get so inundated with a lot of these, we have to, at some point, kind of cut bait on a lot of them. But again, our, our goal is to give you peace of mind and follow up where we can, where it's feasible, where manpower hours are warranted. So definitely, um, save copies of everything that you have, and then give us a call. We'll make a report.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Next on the Fire Chief monthly report, Rodney.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Uh, in the month of February, the Fire Department, we responded to eighty-three calls for service. Of that, eighty-four, actually, was eighty-four calls for service, excuse me. There was sixty-one medicals, eight accidents, five alarms, six smokes, and no fires. We did respond to two mutual aid calls. Uh, one was in Linwood, right on the border of Viking, and the other one was in Oak Grove, right on the border of University. Uh, quick update on the house at twenty-eight, twenty-eight Viking. That is still under investigation, so there's no, really no update on it. They're still investigating that explosion. And as of right now, as of today, we're at two hundred and seventeen calls for service to the year. That puts us twenty-six ahead of last year, and last year was a record year. So, you know, at the rate we're going, we're gonna be at about a thousand calls for service this year and that. So, um, tonight I'm gonna introduce my officers, but before I do that, I'll take any questions on about February's calls before I introduce my officers.
Any calls from, questions from the council?
I got one question. It's, what's other mean, Rod?
Other is like, um, just stuff that we don't have a code for. It's like a...
So it's an actual call?
It is an actual call.
Okay.
It's just listed as, um, like, uh, public assist and stuff like that. That's what others.
I was just curious. You had six of them.
Yeah, because if we put, we put a category in for each call, we have, we'd have a lot of it.
Oh, sure. You probably have tons of them.
Yeah, so.
I got a question for you. You sent me this list of the training and everything else, and thank you for doing that. And I was looking at it, and it's like, does everybody get these?
Every?
All your guys?
Yes.
And there's no times on it. So how do you figure out what time you go?
Everybody should know it's nine o'clock on Monday and seven o'clock.
That's what I'm just saying. I'm going.
It's nine AM, nine AM Monday during the day and seven PM.
Is that what it is? Okay.
Yep, seven PM Monday at night. And if you look on the list, too, we also have a bunch of online calls, or on, online classes.
Okay.
So, like, this week, we're on an online class.
Oh, are you? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I didn't know that. I'm going, what, does everybody guess or what?
It's been those times. I guess it's been those times since I've joined, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the audience? It's all yours, Rodney.
Okay, um, so, as, since I'm the fairly new fire chief, I'm gonna introduce myself first. I'm Rodney Sannell. I'm with, I've been with the East Bethel Fire Department for twenty-three years. I've been in the position, in every position on the Fire Department except for the deputy chief, which was held by Chief Anderson. Uh, I was hired as the full-time chief when Chief Descharm retired in October. My wife Lisa and I have been married for thirty-two years. We have three daughters, two grandson, and I have lived in East Bethel since nineteen ninety-seven. In my spare times, I, I like to golf and fish, but I don't have a lot of spare time, so. And now, I'll start with the next full-time, um, person. Our full-time inspector is Ben Newton. Ben has been with the resident for, of East Bethel for ten years. He's been in the fire service for sixteen years, and those were, some of the first six were down in Columbia Heights. He doesn't have that written down here, but I know that. Uh, Ben was hired a little over a year ago as the full-time inspector and is responsible for many aspects of the day-to-day Fire Department operations, in addition to call, response, and inspection. Ben has been involved in EMS for over twenty years and is currently working part-time at Alina as a paramedic. And this is Ben Newton. He's, like I said, our other full-time person. District Chief Troy Lashinsky is chief three. He's the fire chief at Station Two. Troy joined the East Bethel Fire Department in two thousand and five, was promoted to lieutenant in two thousand and eighteen, and then the district chief in twenty twenty-three. Troy's full-time job is a production, product manager at ImageStrand, where he manages software packages that is used by the Fire Department and EMS services throughout, uh, the United States. And we do use ImageStrand as of right now, in that. So it's great to have Troy around to help us with that. Troy's been involved with the Relief Association since two thousand and seven and has been the president since two thousand and eight. Of the Relief Association, he has worked to increase the pension for the fighter fighters by seventy-five percent. Troy has also led the Charge for Heart Safe in the program of East Bethel. East Bethel, East Bethel has an effort to train, has trained more than ten thousand citizens and is on how to do hands-only CPR. Troy is also the East Bethel Chapter Organization representative for the Cub Scouts. This is Troy Lashinsky, uh, this is chief at Station Two. Our next first, next chief is Chief Wade Hoffman. Wade has been on the East Bethel Fire Department since two thousand and ten, and is an EMT and an officer since two thousand and eighteen. Wade has worked full-time for the city of St. Paul as electrical inspector. Wade and his wife have lived in, her wife, not wives. Not that I know of, you know. For seventeen years and have, and has, they have two boys that go to St. Francis High School. In his free time, Wade likes to play disc golf at Blue Ribbon Vines and ride the Bethel Haunted Trails. Thank you, Wade. Captain Ryan Henry. Ryan is the captain for Stations one and three. We combine Station one and three at nights for just a, that's our south area. So Ryan is the, is the captain for Stations one and three. Ryan is married to his wife Amy and have two children, Jake, fifteen, and Tanner, thirteen. Ryan and Amy have lived in the city since two thousand and six, eager to be involved in the community. Ryan joined the department in two thousand and ten and started as a firefighter and became an EMT, and him and Wade are neighbors, so they probably talked to each other into it. And him and Wade are neighbors, so they probably talked each other into it. He has been involved with fire safety programs, first aid training with the Boy Scout troop, and BMX teams in our community. Ryan has served as a lieutenant from two thousand and eighteen to twenty-two, and is now serving as a captain. It started in two thousand and twenty-three. Ryan's full-time job is with the Anoka County Highway Department? Highway Department. Thank you, Ryan. Captain Kyle Howard. Kyle is the captain at Station Two nights, and that. Kyle's a member of the department for eight years, Kyle's worked with, Kyle works with the City of Blaine as a utility billing supervisor. Kyle has a bachelor in financing and accounting, is currently pursuing his MBA with a concentration in information systems. When not studying, he likes to travel. This is Kyle. Lieutenant Chad Fish. Chad has been with the Fire Department since two thousand and ten. He was appointed Lieutenant at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three. Chad's full-time job is with Alina Health Systems as an EMT, and he's been there for twelve years. He's also a field training officer for Alina. Chad has been very helpful in helping with the new firefighters and getting them ready to take their certification tests. Because, because of the amount of EMS calls we do, it's nice to have Chad, Ben, and some other people on the department to help with all that, and get these guys through there. So Chad Fish. Lieutenant Nate Fish. Nate has been with the department since two thousand and fifteen, and was appointed to Lieutenant to the position in January twenty twenty-three. Nate's full-time job is a master plumber, and he's very helpful in training the new personnel and has been willing to help out whenever asked. Nate enjoys camping in his spare time. And Nate is, like I said, he is a master plumber, so when we have problems and that, we do call him a lot to come and help with it. He understands, um, friction lost and all that good stuff. Lieutenant Jill King cannot, cannot be here tonight, she is out teaching for Men Fire. She is Lieutenant at Stations One and Three. She lives, Jill's been with the department since two thousand and seventeen. Jill is our training officer, lives on the Coon Lake Beach area of the city with her husband, two dogs, and her daughter when she's home from college. You will still see Jill around the area walking her dogs, and think she has greyhounds, so. You'll see that Jill is also a trainer for Men Fire, which she is doing right now, and trains other departments when maintaining the health as a firefighter. So these are your officers for the East Bethel Fire Department, they will be in these positions for the next three years. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
I'd just like to say thank you, gentlemen, for progressing in roles of leadership. Not a lot of people want to take on the responsibility, so the fact that you gentlemen do, it's outstanding. Thank you for your efforts for the City of East Bethel and its residents.
Yeah, I just wanted to say my thanks, guys, a bunch of guys that care, and I like that. They care about the city and they care about the people, that's what I like. Thank you.
And I just would like to add that every one of these guys have, officers have started a new role as an officer. Since two thousand and twenty-three January, we had to move people up because of retirements and that, and me getting the full-time position. So Troy took my spot as District Chief. Wade, we had no District Chief when Mark Pratcher retired, so he moved into that, and that just moved everybody up into the next position. And then Chad, Kyle, and Nate are all brand-new officers. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Five-point-oh public forum, I don't see anybody signed up, so we'll move on to six-point-oh consent agenda.
I'm not sure what the proper, you know, Robert's Rules of Order thing is, but I suppose I should read my own notes now, and then. When we were passing that resolution, and I motioned it, and I didn't even read my notes. That Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-one, there's a typo in it, that, it's a, it's a minor thing, but I should mention it. Uh, on line seven, under advisory bodies, it says, "Or may appointment one of the applicants." It should be, "May appoint one of the applicants remaining." Just a minor-
We'll make that correction.
Just for good order.
Mayor and Council, that would be deemed a Scrivener error, so that could be taken care of, uh, on, on a Scrivener basis.
Without another public hearing or anything?
Without another public hearing, correct, Councilmember.
Okay, on the, on the consent agenda, I'd like to pull Item A, approval of bills.
Should we, uh, make a motion first? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and we'll-
Oh, is that how you do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
A second.
Motion made, second discussion.
Okay, I'd like to pull Item A, approval of bills. Just a couple of questions on it.
Okay.
I'd like to pull A, B, C, E, F, and H.
A, B?
Yep, C.
C?
E, F, and H.
E, F and G?
F and H.
F and H, okay. So that means we've got D, G, and I left. Well, it's closed already, we closed it. No, we've already closed it, sorry. To the remaining ones, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, those pass. So Kevin, you got Item A.
Okay, just on, on the, uh, bills for approval list. Under the Finance Department, has professional service fees paid to Anoka County in the amount of fourteen-hundred-some dollars. I just wondered what it was. Is there ongoing training, or what is it?
That's for the truth and taxation charge they place on us.
What place on?
Truth and taxation, so when we send the budget in at the end of each year, that's when they certify that and put it on the tax bills.
Hmm, okay. Uh, let's see. The next one is, uh, MSA Street Construction Engineering. Sorry, I'm slow. Well, just for example, Hackenson Anderson Associates, eighty-nine hundred bucks plus. Do you know what that relates to? Because one of the things we get asked questions about, just so you know, are some of the peripheral bills, like engineering, for example. And what, and how, as an extension of what I asked about the legal bills and what projects they applied to, same kind of thing applies to engineering, is what, does it relate to general, or is it just a specific project, that kind of thing?
This, this one is a specific project, it's the engineering cost for the one hundred and eighty-third Avenue reconstruction project.
No.
That's one that we're going to open bids on tomorrow, so that's what that cost is for.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to approve it?
I got a question on A also.
Oh, okay.
Jack, on this, uh, Oakenson Anderson, throughout all the bills that we have, total comes to eighteen thousand forty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Now, Craig Yocum, he is, uh, on our budget for forty grand, right?
Correct.
Now, is this over and above what he gets?
There's, it's broken down into two things. There's general engineering, which comes out of that forty thousand dollars. A lot of these things that are project-specific are charged to the project and either paid out of our MSA funds or our street capital funds. So, there's two, two ways we pay the engineer. Uh, there's been never a year that he's gone over that forty thousand, some of them have been even a little less than that. Most of his payments are specific project, engineering funds for a road project, so.
Okay, so then, the eighteen thousand then basically is over what his is, because it's for separate things.
Yeah, for, for, for that, probably out of that eighteen thousand, I'm going to say about, uh, thirteen thousand of it is for our road projects. One hundred and eighty-third, uh, the hundred, the Sims Avenue project, or the two university projects, so, uh, those come out of that. There's some things from Elevage, and a lot of those costs too are reimbursable, the Elevage stuff will come out of their escrow, so they'll pay us back.
Because the reason, the reason I'm asking is like, okay, if we're paying a contract price to Craig for forty thousand, he works for this company, if I understand it right?
Correct.
Okay, so then, I'm trying to get at, if we're paying a lot more above that, is it better off that we hire our own engineer period, full-time?
No, uh, the cost of hiring a city engineer would probably be much higher than what we're paying him. Now, there are-
I understand that.
The, the, a lot of these things too, when we're paying him, like the eighty-nine hundred dollars that Kevin asked for. That's not just for Craig, that's for the services, his firm, his surveyors, his inspectors. So it encovers a multitude of people or personnel within his firm. So if we hired our own city engineer, we'd still have all these other costs we'd have to pay.
That's what I'm getting at, trying to figure out, to make sure we're cost-effective on it. Okay, that's cool. That's all I got on that one.
Was that it, on A?
Yep.
Okay, then-
You can make a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we approve Item A.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Jim?
B. B. I had a question about, actually, all the minutes since we've been on council. It appears to me that it's like, the minutes are never correct. There's always something that's wrong with them, versus if you watch the video. So I guess, how does that work? Do you, uh, I might imagine that we have to approve them before you have them print them, right? From the company, that secretarial, time saver secretarial?
Well, that-
They send you a-
They, they send us the minutes. We take a look at it to see if there's anything that they didn't have, they usually highlight things. Sometimes they question the spelling of a name or something like that. We make those corrections. This is why we have a review of the minutes to make sure they're accurate, and that way, everybody gets a chance to look at them and comment on what they said, so that's the way the corrections of the minutes are made.
So then, basically, you send them the video of our meeting?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, because like on, just for March sixth, I mean, the CAT ordinance was brought up, I couldn't find it anywhere on it. So, we need to fix that, I don't know exactly even where it was.
Uh, I think it was just brought up briefly at the end, end of, at, at the end of the meeting, or after the lady gave the presentation.
My point is, it's not in the minutes written, we need to fix that.
Okay.
So, what do we table that until it gets fixed, or what do we do? We don't want to approve it.
No, I'd, I'd-
Are you referring to March sixth or March thirteenth?
March sixth.
Okay, I don't believe the CAT ordinance was in, uh, the first time the CAT ordinance was brought up was at the March thirteenth meeting, I believe, from the person who spoke at the public forum.
Yeah.
That was March sixth.
Mar, March sixth was a work meeting.
Well, that was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we didn't have public forum then?
No.
Okay, I got the dates wrong on that then, okay.
Yeah, if there's something you want changed, we'll table it till the next time, make those changes for your review, and then we can approve it.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure it was, was in with the March, uh, thirteenth minutes for that council meeting.
Advise me if I'm out of order, like we need a motion or something, is-
Oh, you're fine.
What, what was the motivation for going from actual transcription to interpretive transcription, is what I call it, where you, it's like, it's just their version of what people were saying and all that. What, that happened sometime in the past couple, three years?
No, actually, that happened back in probably twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen.
That long ago, huh?
Yeah, so-
And what was the motivation exactly?
I think it was to be a summary-type minutes to save on cost. At that time, we were doing it with a staff person, and it was taking her, she attended the meetings, so she was paid overtime to take the notes, and then she did the transcription, which took her about ten or twelve hours, which took a great deal of time away from her duties.
Okay, but, but with time savers, we, we've been using them for ten, twelve years?
We've been using them since twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, okay. Well, could you do this, could you find out what a literal transcription of the minutes would be versus this, my version of it, kind of transcription of the thing, which I, I, I mean, I, I get tired of even bringing it up, but I see holes all the time. And one, I'm referred to as she, I, I, you know, I, I, that was a first in my life, and nobody ever confused me for female before. But, you know, it's just like, uh, you know, it's just, it's, you get tired of wanting to fix it, you know? But I'm just wondering, what really is the cost difference between just doing it verbatim, like transcription is supposed to be done, and this second-degree version of transcription? And I know the argument is, you can always go back to the video, well, why not have it right in the minutes, because they're part of the record, you know?
I, I would recommend what we do, and I can let them know that, but our, the cost of the minutes is based on a per-page basis. So I can instruct them to do a literal transcription, and we compare the cost then.
Yeah, I would just like to know, what, what do we, you know, what are the, what's the difference? Presumably, if you do literal transcription, you pick up accuracy.
Yeah.
Which is worth something, but not at the cost of, you know, if it's ten times as much money, no, probably not. But I, I would just like to know what, what would be required to do that.
I, I can contact them and ask them, if they have an estimate, or if we want to, we can try one and see what it is.
Or is it a matter of who we use to do the service?
Well, uh, they do the service for a number of cities around here, so there may be some others, but, uh, let me talk to them and find out what.
Yeah, I just, you know, or maybe, maybe it's because, like, half the time I listen to videos from the media center, and the, and the volume is so low. I, I mean, I have Harman Kardon speakers on my computer, and I've got them cranked all the way, and I'm, you know, I'm looking to bring more voltage into the house just to try to be able to hear the damn thing. But, uh, that's, that's another issue, but, but yeah, I would like to, I would like to know about that.
I'll look into that, and we'll get a report back at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
So then we're going to table B to fix that? Then, okay, C, on page fifty-nine, they got Schroder wrote in there, and I believe it's supposed to be Schrader, in two spots.
Okay.
And, uh, page fifty-nine also, fifty-nine or fifty-eight, there was, uh, at public forum, Christine Dolman was speaking, and, uh, I remember, uh, Councilman Mundell raised his voice to her and said her name, and that's not in the minutes anywhere. So, we need to look into that too, there's stuff just missing on the public forum and that part of it, so we can table that as well until we fix it.
What was in the six minutes that you wanted to change, March sixth?
The CAT ordinance, but I don't know if I have the right date, I might have the wrong date on that.
Yeah, I think it was the thirteenth, was that when we had the public forum?
Okay, then the thirteenth, then that would be the one. So six then would be fine.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve six, March sixteen, or sixth, to prove it on B.
So you're gonna, you're gonna, uh, approve six?
Yeah, we're fine, yeah.
Okay, you want, your motion made?
Yep.
Second?
What's the motion again?
To approve, approve Item B.
Oh, okay, second.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Then C?
Table that one.
Motion made to table it, second?
On the same grounds?
There's words that are spelled wrong and stuff on.
All right, second.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor of the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that tabled. Then Item E?
E, I want to table this one, because I want to check out the trailer myself and take a look at it. And I haven't had time to do that, so I will do that. So I'll make a motion to table this on E.
Motion made to table, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second discussion made, is there any timeframe on it? I know there's, you said, I had talked to you about the trailer, there's some time, because the prices are going up again?
Uh, the quote I think we have is good for thirty days. The, uh, trailer itself, um, the commercial vehicle inspection tag will expire in April. And after that time, the trailer won't be able to be used. Because it are, we have a, one of our staff members is certified to do the commercial vehicle inspections, and due to cracks in the frame, he's not comfortable providing another year of, uh, service on that vehicle for exposure to the city for liability if something were to happen. So, this trailer's twenty-six years old, um, it's, we've gotten more than our money's worth out of it. So, yeah, we're welcome to come down and take a look at it, we can show you the cracks on the frame and whatnot.
Yeah, that's, that's the- Yeah, that's, that's the missing detail though, is cracks in a trailer frame is not good.
Right.
Right.
You can't, he, he's not comfortable certifying it and I'm, so we're
I understand.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that on here. We don't have any mention of cracks in the frame. That's
Yeah, right.
That's very significant.
I saw, if you've got any questions, I can explain.
Yeah.
So then how long, or how much do you use the trailer, Nate?
This is our trailer that gets probably used the most besides possibly our mowing trailer. This pulls our Bobcat, everywhere our Bobcat goes, this is the trailer.
So then you mean that you nursed it along for twenty-six years?
It, uh, replaced the trailer that we got rid of as our number one trailer.
Really?
Yep.
Okay, I'll take a look at it though. So you need a motion to do that?
Gonna get on that in the next couple of days?
I'll get it, yeah.
Motion made to table it, second?
Instead of just approving it as we go.
The motion made, is there a second? The table?
Uh, second.
Motion made, sec- second, uh, discussion. All in favor to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, tabled. Then you got F.
Same thing with this one here. I'll check into this. I'll make a motion to table this. I'll go over it with Nate.
Motion made to table, item F, second.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. All in favor to the table, say aye.
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 Opposed, that
Aye.
And then item H.
H, for these lights, I was reading on this stuff here, Jack, we only have one estimate on that for thirty, four hundred dollars?
We do have two quotes on it. This is the lower, that's the low estimate on there.
Why aren't we, it's not in our paperwork at all?
Um, with their city's purchasing policy, anything under five thousand dollars doesn't require, it can be purchased on direct negotiation or on open market. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, it's the state recommendation is twenty-five thousand dollars?
You're correct.
Co- co- competitive bidding takes place over a hundred and seventy-five thousand in between there, so you can do either one, but we do have two quotes. This is the low quote on it.
Well, I'm just saying, any quote that we do on anything, we should at least have three.
Uh, the state requirement is two quotes.
I don't care what the state says.
And our city
This is our tax dollars that are being spent here.
We should change our purchasing
We need to get the best, yeah, right. What do we need to do to change that? How do we change that so we can at least get three cost estimates on it?
You could, uh, change it through, uh, policy or ordinance.
Is it an ordinance now?
No, it's, it's just, it's just policy.
I think they changed it through the state system because it was hard for people to get three quotes on everything. We have so many times when, uh, contractors, we've had them come out, give us quotes. We've never used them, so they don't even give us a quote anymore.
Well, yeah, you can't abuse them.
Well, we're not abusing them, we just keep asking for quotes and they're, they're not the lowest, so it's hard to get them certifying quotes, but the state, the state requirement is two, two competitive or comparable quotes.
I don't know. I'll make a motion to approve, I guess, H?
Motion made to approve, second?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
Is there any, any, any other, uh, discussion about this? You guys, how do you feel about it? Is there any way we can get the quotes? I know you gave us one here. Can, can we get all the quotes?
Yeah, they can, you can include them in the, in the attachments.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have them all too, if anybody wants to look at them, I can supply them later.
It would make it a lot easier. At least we can look at them and see that. Cause when people just throw numbers down, it's like, I don't like that at all.
We understand you guys have a balancing act between lay everything out and bury us with detail.
Part of it too, yep.
Yeah.
So we understand it's a balancing.
We have everything for everything.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Does a motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Um, before I move on to item seven, I guess somebody came in late that wanted to talk at the public forum. I will open the public forum for the young lady, if you wanna come up to
Wow, that's
No problem.
Right up to the microphone.
So, yeah, I actually, I, I live, um, at eight, six, three, two hundred and thirty-fifth Avenue, North East.
Speak into the mic.
In East Bethel. And they're putting this trail right next to my house. It's like twenty-two feet from my, my house. And it's a fourteen foot wide paved path and I have three acres. And I just, uh, I'm just really not for it. I mean, my daughter's definitely afraid of dogs and I just, uh, she got bit a year ago and I ju- there's people walking through my yard with dogs. I just, I'm not comfortable. Um, they're gonna build a bridge on my, my creek or my, my, I have a pond. And I just really don't want people, you know, walking through there all times of the night, you know, smoking, throwing their cigarettes, walking dogs, being, you know, twenty-two feet from my son's room, which is downstairs, mine's upstairs. Um, but, um, my neighbors are really not for it either. I haven't, I'm on a cul-de-sac and I just, I just don't really understand the whole situation because none of the neighbors, I went to a meeting two years ago and we were all kind of against except one neighbor. And I just, uh, I just wanna know more about it, cause I don't really know much about it, but it's just really close to my house.
Are you a friend of Joe Ryder's?
Um, I actually work with, yeah, I work with his captain.
Okay, cause, cause Joe took me over to see the
Yeah, yeah, that's my house.
Yeah, okay.
Aaron, is there something you can look into?
Sure, it's a parks trail.
Okay, that's something
It's from the park commission, recommendation for the John Anderson Trail Project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that approved by the city council?
Yes, the trail project was.
Do you know when?
Nah, it was in the budget. It was approved with the park, uh, capital improvements budget last year.
There's a lot, a lot of neighbors that are really not for it. And all of a sudden, I looked out my bedroom window last summer when I was at home for lunch break and I'm like, holy cow, they're like cutting this path and I mean, I don't wanna sit here and say, you know, yeah, I am a single mom, but it's just like twenty-two feet from my house. I have three acres and it's just really uncomfortable. People are walking through all night
That's encroachment.
Hours, you know, cause my son's room's right there and if he has, he can't even open his window at night if people are gonna be right there walking. I know it's through the woods. I don't know, sometimes teenagers get like weird at night and like, you know, I don't know, I just, it's really
Was there a public hearing about this, Nate?
No.
Uh.
We had a park commission meeting in the park with, we invited, uh, everybody in the neighborhood parks to come to the park commission.
Yeah, well.
This would have been, uh,
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah, and like one neighbor was for it and, cause he wants to ride a bike, but I've never seen him ride a bike. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, that seems awfully encroaching on your property, twenty-two feet.
I moved to the country, cause I didn't, I mean, I knew there was an easement, but I really didn't think they're gonna pave a fourteen foot wide path.
Uh.
If I want that, I moved to Maple Grove. I, I'm not trying to be a computer
What did Joni Mitchell said? They paved paradise and put up a park in there?
Right. I just like, I thought about moving, interest rates are too high. I don't wanna move, but, cause I can't afford to move, but
Uh.
I just worry about like
Doesn't seem like you're being unreasonable to me. I wouldn't want people
Thanks for letting me talk. Like, I'm really super shy, but I just, I have to do this for like my kids and stuff.
Well, of course, you're a citizen. Well, yeah.
If you live on the cul-de-sac, where's the parking for this park walk?
That's exactly, you know, I was kinda talking to my neighbors. They live on the cul-de-sac. I mean, are people gonna park in the cul-de-sac? There's like, I don't know, eight houses in the whole, my neighborhood. My, my neighborhood doesn't have the park. It's, it's actually, you know, the, the one off, you know, John Anderson. I just don't know where these people are actually gonna go to, just, I don't know. I don't think anybody would want this if it was their house.
Well, is there some way to take another look at this? I mean, here, I mean, it's, it seems quite valid.
That would be wonderful.
Maybe to do it
The concerns seem legitimate.
Meeting, just a, just a quick, real quick, uh, update on the park commission got to this point. When that development was put in, there's a piece of property that was park land dedicated for a trail connection. So this connects to the backside of John Anderson Park. And then it was meant as, uh, it's not a place to park and walk. It would be a spot where you connect, so that neighborhood and the neighborhood's pastor could get to John Anderson Park through this trail. So it was a trail connection to connect two neighborhoods, basically, is how it, how it was, it was put in with the plat, when the plat went in, when the houses went in originally. It was never built at that time, the park commission
Yeah, I mean, I've been there.
The park commission wanted us to put the trail in, so.
That's, that's right on top of your house, you know?
It would be a eight foot wide paved path on, I think it's a fifteen foot wide easement is what the easement would be, off the top of my head. It's not easements, park, park land, it's dedicated park.
Well, it seems like it, you should at least revisit it with the people who lived there and get their opinion of it, you know? I mean, I, I would, if I were in your position, I would.
We haven't built that park portion, you know, we got the rest of the trail built.
I mean, the some, the fact that something's provided for in a conveyance or real estate conveyance doesn't mean you have to do it. Or it doesn't mean you have to pave it either. You could just have a gravel or, you know, whatever the class number for crushed redstone is or something, but better than asphalt in the middle of nature, which I'm not a fan of myself, but but it just seems that the citizens are concerned about it and I've seen it. Uh, Mr. Ryder took me there and I thought, wow, this is right on top of our house, you know, this is, I wouldn't want people twenty-two feet outside of my window.
Yep, this was
Now, when you have two acres, it's like, what's the point of the rest of the land, you know? Couldn't find anywhere else to put this?
Right.
Come on. So I, I think it's, I really do think it's worth looking at again.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So is this, is this carved in stone that it has to go there?
I, um, council can do whatever they, uh, approve, I would think.
Yeah, thi- thi- this is a project that was approved by a previous council, but it could be changed.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm of the opinion it needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Well, that gives me hope.
I'll put a fine point on it, it seems kinda goofy to me.
Thank you, guys.
So what, do we need a motion to do this?
No, this is just all public forum. Yeah, we could do it at a next work meeting, we could talk about it more, or whatever council would like to do.
Yeah, if you guys could investigate and report back, you know, some plan of action to check with the people who live there and, and see if they're all on board or not. If maybe nobody heard about the previous meeting and, or they were afraid to show up, cause they were shy or whatever.
It's possible that they might not even need it. I mean, if it's just a go-between and it goes nowhere, except for a neighborhood, so.
Well, connects a whole, another part of the city and eventually connect up to the haunted trails is the, the long-term plan for the
Really?
It doesn't ha- connect to the haunted trails?
It would go out to Bondi, you could be able to get out to Bondi Park and then through Bondi Park to the haunted trails.
You're gonna make a trail off Jackson then, or do you want
It would be, it would be a shoulder on Jackson.
Is there no other way to get to where you're talking about?
No.
No?
Not without going out to highway sixty-five.
And there has to be a bridge as part of this too?
It's a, it would be a floating dock, boardwalk section.
Well, yeah, okay.
The thing is where you're talking though too, Nate, I know the area, it's like, then you're gonna have to go through other people's yards to get to Bondi.
No, there's no, there's no other plan to go through any other yards. It would be just out to theirs, to their road. Then down Bondi, which has a wide shoulder into, into Bondi Park and then eventually potentially getting back to this is on the long-term plan for the Parks Commission, this is, I'm just, I'm just relaying the information.
No, I understand, but it's like, it doesn't make sense to me that
Plans are made to change.
Through there, you know what I mean? And then take the road and get on Jackson and go down to Bondi.
Right.
You know what I mean? That makes no sense at all, you know?
Although going, it's compared to going out to highway sixty-five.
No, I understand that part, but it's like, this don't make sense at all.
I think it would be great if we could be responsive to what I think are reasonable concerns.
And I think we spoke with your other neighbor too, and one of the things we were gonna talk about, we're doing was putting up, if the project continues, put up a fence possibly along, along there too. We can, you know, rope it anything.
All right, cool.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take a look at it too, at this
I would love you guys to come over, please.
Okay.
It's very slippery like my yard, but yeah.
Probably not the time of year for a hike.
It's melting.
Of course, that'll keep the people out of it.
Right. Well, thank you again.
Just get a lot of chickens and
That's, I agree, Joe, Joe changed the chicken.
Push them, push them and then we're back where the trail is gonna
Be here, so we don't need to feed for the chickens.
I'll take care of it self, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this something you'd like to schedule for a work meeting discussion on what options are on this?
Well, it'd be, it would be neat if we could have an update of the situation at the April third work meeting. Is it April third, isn't it?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, just a cursory look at the situation, just say, you know, can we make reasonable accommodations for the people in that neighborhood? And not just, you know, based on her concerns, which are the most pressing, literally, but the other people who live in the neighborhood, you know? Cause I think that, I think if you live in a neighborhood, you own the property, your rights trump people who wanna get to a park and go right through your property. I think you, I think you're the one with the trump rights.
I think the initial plan for that development when it was put in was to provide access to a park for the people that live in the neighborhood. It was never built at the time. It's actually dedicated park land that connects to John Anderson, so, yeah, I see what you're saying.
But, yeah, that doesn't compel us to do anything in particular, but
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it needs to be revisited, that's my opinion.
I agree.
Do you need a motion of some kind?
No. No.
Okay.
With that direction.
Okay, moving on, seven point oh, new business. You have nothing on new business?
Well, hang on a minute.
Cause I see you've got one here for the, uh, park dedication fees. Okay, you got that one?
Yep.
Okay.
Item seven point oh, park dedication fees. Consider a recommendation from the park commission to update the park dedication fees. The current park dedication fees were established by ordinance revision that was approved on August fifth, twenty fifteen. Article seven, section sixty-six dash one nine five of the city code was amended to include the reduction of the not-to-exceed fee for residential park dedication from six thousand to two thousand dollars per lot, exempting one habitable homestead per subdivision if applicable. And reducing the park dedication for commercial industrial development from a not-to-exceed fee of forty-five hundred dollars to two thousand dollars per acre. Within the current ordinance, the city can either elect to require a dedication of up to ten percent of new residential developments for parkland or receive funds equal to ten percent of the market value of the property prior to development, not to exceed two thousand dollars per lot. For commercial or industrial development, this is lowered to five percent with a do-not-to-exceed value of two thousand dollars per acre. These lowers fee, these lowers, excuse me, these lower fees were adopted to compensate for higher water and sewer costs of the city's small consumer-based standalone utility system. Lower park dedication fees were put in place to maintain the competitive balance required to offset lower SAC and WAC charges of market area municipalities. The need to update these fees to meet the demands for park improvements and new facilities was discussed at the December thirteenth park commission meeting and the joint city council work meeting and park commission meeting on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. Based on discussions from both of these meetings and discussions at the park third, uh, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three park commission meeting, the park commission unanimously recommended moving to a per-unit fee for residential developments. The recommendation included a two thousand dollar per unit fee in new single-family developments and a fifteen hundred dollar per unit fee for new multifamily developments. They also included a recommendation for a twenty-five percent reduction, unit reduction in multifamily developments that include public recreation facilities. The park commission was aware of the pending litigation regard, regarding commercial industrial park dedication fees, but recommended making changes to our current policy in conjunction with the residential, residential changes to keep the process easy to understand and consistent. They recommended a per acre fee of two thousand dollars for new commercial industrial development. Once the court system rules on this issue, the city's code can be changed to reflect that. The recommended fees would increase park revenue for new development while not being so high as to be a deterrent to prospective developers. The fees would be included in the annual city fee schedule and be reviewed annually and adjusted as deemed appropriate to balance the demands for park facilities and improvements within, with market conditions and development projects. The recommendation from the park commission, the city council considered approval of a two thousand dollar per lot park dedication fee for single-family developments, a fifteen hundred dollar per unit park dedication fee for multifamily developments with a twenty-five fee, percent fee reduction for those that include recreational facilities available to the public and two thousand dollars per acre for park dedication fees on commercial light industrial developments and amend city fee schedule to, to reflect these changes.
Point of, point of information, or however you correctly say it, why do we not need a resolution for something like this, but we need them for other things? Can you help me understand that?
We do need a resolution for this.
We do. So this is just preliminary to the resolution?
Yeah, and I, and I, we'd have, we, I recommend we table this and have the resolution at the next meeting.
Oh, okay. The next meeting, regular meeting of the
Yes, April tenth.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, tabled. Uh, department reports, twenty twenty-three GPA street maintenance project bids.
Item eight point oh, E one. The twenty twenty-three GPA street maintenance project bids. Consider approving the twenty twenty-three GPA street maintenance project bids and authorizing to submit a letter of concurrence for bid acceptance. The following projects were approved to be bid as part of the twenty twenty-three GPA street maintenance program by city council on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. These projects have been identified in the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven street capital improvement plan and include two hundred thousand linear feet of pavement markings and one hundred thousand feet of, uh, crack sealing. The allocated budget for crack sealing and striping the above-listed streets was two hundred thousand dollars. These projects will be funded from the street capital fund as identified in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven capital improvement plan. On Friday, March tenth, the city of Coon Rapids received an open bids for the North Metro Street Maintenance Program and the bids are shown there. Uh, the striping was point zero eight six six Uh, the striping was point zero eight six six, uh, cent, uh, dollars per linear feet, and the, uh, crack feeling was point five, basically fifty cents a linear foot. The bid results are consistent with past costs and the, uh, sorry, for the total project cost, is seventy-one thousand four hundred and seven dollars. The bid results are consistent with past costs and the project is budgeted in the twenty twenty-three street capital fund. This contract can be amended regarding the inclusion of additional line, uh, item bid quantities. The remainder of the budget amount would remain in the street capital fund and will help with anticipated higher costs of planned overlay and reconstruction projects. Staff recommends, uh, has reviewed the bids and recommends acceptance of the twenty twenty-three GPA street maintenance agreement bids in the amount of seventy-one thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Authorization to submit a letter of concurrence to the City of Coon Rapids indicating our participation in this project.
Is there a motion?
Again, the resolution question, is there a resolution that has to be done?
Not, not on this one.
So, it's just a motion, a motion to approve the expenditure, I'm, I so move.
Motion made second, discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes. Nate, as long as we're on this, you wanna let these guys know that with these potholes, that the costs are gonna go up a little bit more because blacktop's up and, you know, there's a lot of potholes, a lot of people complaining, and just so they know, when they come, when these bills come out, there's probably gonna be some extra.
This year's, uh, been a lot worse for potholes due to the daytime high temperatures and the nights that have been freezing. We've got a few developments, uh, we're gonna be ta- talking about when we get closer to our budget time. Um, couple of them just off the top of my head are Hidden Haven Development, uh, Cedar Brook Edition, and a couple of them around Coon Lake that are older developments that we're gonna have to take a hard look at, possibly doing a reconstruction project on some of these.
Yeah.
They were designed in the late seventies and early eighties, and they did not have adequate street stormwater drainage, so they sheet flow the water across the streets, the road stays wet all the time, especially in the spring when the snow melts. That's a recipe for disaster for potholes, so.
Would Lake Shore Drive be one of those?
Uh, Lake Shore Drive.
On the south side of Coon Lake?
That's just patching on that for right now.
Oh, really? Yeah, I'm surprised.
It was, that was a s- a sand road that, uh, was just paved over. It's, they called them shaped and paved back in the day. We have a lot of those in some of our older buildings.
And I'd just like to tell the people out there that are listening to it, if, if you got a pothole, you can call City Hall or call Public Works, I mean, I've gotten about ten calls, and every one of them, they, they're not potholes, they're craters, so.
The material that.
Bad one, get, get ahold of us right away, so.
The material that we use this time of year is a winter cold patch. We can't use hot mix yet until the frost comes out of the ground, and the material was, the contractor ran out for about a week and a half. We just got it back in stock on Friday, so.
Yeah, we, we don't have a hot patch truck right now anyway. That went in for repairs, right?
That should be hopefully ready to go soon, yeah. We can, we can, we have other ways to do it. We can patch all the back of a dump truck if we have to, but once we get, uh, some warmer temperatures, we'll be out in full force patching with hot mix and all day, every day, so.
Okay, good. Um, eight point oh, G one, commission appointment policy revision.
As city code, chapter two, article four, section two seven one, was amended as item four point oh A on the agenda for tonight's City Council meeting. The commission authority appointment policy needs to be updated to reflect the code changes. Attachment one in your packet contains these changes as a redline edit of the policy, and attachment two is a clean copy. These updates will align this policy with the code amendments to section two dash seventy-one. Staff is requesting council approval of the amended commission authority appointment policy.
There a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second, discussion.
I better wait for Mr. Lewis to come back for the vote.
You got a motion and a second on this amendment, commission authority appointment policy amendment. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Number two, Upper Rum River MWO twenty-four budget.
The Upper Rum River Water Management Organization is a joint powers organization consisting of Bethel, East Bethel, Ham Lake, now then Oak Grove and St. Francis. Statutorily, all municipalities in the seven county metro area are required to participate in the water management organizations or districts. Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources is a state agency that oversees and monitors the operation of the WMOs. The member cities of the Upper Rum River WMO jointly address water resources issues in this watershed. The organization is operated by an appointed board which consists of two representatives from each member locality. The Upper Rum River WMO Joint Powers Agreement provides rules and procedures for operation during organization. City person, City Councilperson Tim Miller and citizen member Roger Loesch are East Bethel's representatives on the Upper Rum River WMO. The Upper Rum River's draft twenty twenty-four budget is provided to each member city for their input and is attached for review. Any requests to modify this budget need to be submitted to the Upper Rum River WMO prior to April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. After that date, and absent any comments or direction from East Bethel, our portion of the budget would be considered approved at that level indicated for twenty twenty-four. The Upper Rum River WMO understands that fluctuating budget proposals can be difficult for members to accommodate, and they recognize the difficulties discomposed. As opposed to letting excess dollars in years of lesser obligation and carrying those funds forward to years with projected increased cost, this is still a better budgeting option to deal with these changing requests for funds. The proposed twenty twenty-four Upper Rum River WMO budget is forty-one thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars as compared to the twenty twenty-three budget of forty-four thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. East Bethel's portion of this budget is proposed to be nine thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, or a decrease of five point eight percent from the twenty twenty-three share, city share of nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Staff requests City Council consider approval of the Upper Rum River WMO draft twenty twenty-four budget as exhibited in attachment one.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
Motion made second.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. No discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Number three, April work meeting.
Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for Monday, April third, two thousand twenty-three, at seven P M. The following items are recommended for discussion. Number one is an addition made by Mr. Smith about two ordinance revisions consideration. It will be discussed at the work meeting, and then can be forwarded on the council. Public hearing can be held for consideration of approval on these on April the twenty-fourth. One item on the, uh, proposed agenda for the work meeting, the discussion of a conduit bond issuance proposal is going to be pulled. I got an email late this afternoon from the, uh, bond council stating that the proposed purchaser was not ready for this. They had some real estate issues to address, and wanted to add this to the May first meeting, so.
Does this mean that the April fourth meeting is off?
The, the April fourth meeting is still off.
Okay.
Uh, but the, the work meeting to discuss the bond stuff will be on May first now. And, and instead, I've also talked to the new school board chairman and the chairman of the school board for ISD fifteen. They would like to meet with the City Council and give a presentation and overview of school board activities, and start doing things to establish working relationships with the city, so. They're gonna make a presentation, and at that point too, if there's any questions, we want to ask them about the possible reopening of Cambie Hills. They can address those to council at that time. Also, I'd like to review the community development director position advertisements, go over things to expand the net of this, so we can cast, uh, see if we can get some more applicants. I'll present some proposals for some ki- consideration on that. I'd like to do an update on the Sunrise River WMO Joint Powers Agreement. And also, there was a request for a CAT ordinance, and we can discuss that to see how we want to proceed.
I wanna say something about this CAT ordinance, I think personally, that's a waste of time.
That's what I said.
It's like, seriously, then what am I gonna do, have a squirrel ordinance too? I mean, we gotta get real with this stuff. We got enough ordinances here that are ridiculous. So, I'd say scratch that one, that's my opinion.
I'd like to replace it with a few.
I'd like to replace it with what?
Uh, I wanna replace those items with a few more other items. I'd like to get the farm storage amendment. I'd like to discuss that a little bit. I'd like to get the exterior farm storage. I'd like to get exterior business, uh, storage amendment looked at, enhancing business security amendment looked at. So, I'd like to get those three items on there.
You got all that, Jack? Okay, is there a motion to approve the work meeting with the additions?
And then you have a discussion?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the work meeting.
Motion made second.
Second.
Second discussion.
Okay, well, let me, let me see, I, I'll just, I'll just jump into this, alright? Like most of my, well, like all of my fellow residents of East Bethel, I got my property tax estimation for the coming year. And after we celebrated and went out to dinner to celebrate it, we came home and contemplated it. I don't know about you guys, but my taxable market value has gone up thirty-eight percent in two years. And my wife and I apparently were asleep last year. We would have appealed it, but, uh, I definitely plan to appeal it this way, which will be a neat trick since I'm on the local Board of Appeal and Adjustment, so I haven't figured out how I'm gonna do that yet. Last time I had to go to the county to get it rolled back, because the City of East Bethel wouldn't accommodate us. And the county rolled back eighty percent of the increase. But anyway, I have a very simple request, and I would say it's more than a request, and that is with all of us, all of the residents of East Bethel facing this, I would like Mr. Ken Tolsman to attend the April tenth regular meeting of the City Council and explain his methodology. I used to be licensed in real estate, and I did mergers and acquisitions, which means I had to do valuations on commercial businesses, which is way harder than residential real estate, because it's not cookie cutter. Everyone's unique, and so it's a whole different level of the game. And I've been going around with Ken Tols, I know he's getting ready to retire, but I've been going around with this guy for a long time about his property valuations, and I just think, in the interest of informing the populace of East Bethel, that it would be good if he just presented a fifteen or thirty-minute summary of how he goes about these, uh, property valuations. Because it's, uh, I used to do that stuff, and it befuddles me, so it must be really confusing to some other people, at least a few other. Uh, but I would like to see that on the agenda for the April tenth meeting. I really would.
We will extend that invitation to him.
Yeah, and, and, uh, use your most persuasive language in doing that, alright?
Well, to the motion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have an agenda for the work meeting. Item four, Sunrise MWO twenty twenty-three budget amendment.
The Sunrise River Water Management Organization conducted meetings on October fourth, October nineteenth, and December sixth, twenty twenty-two, and on March first, twenty twenty-three, with city administrators and council member liaisons from each member municipality to discuss amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement. It would update the agreement to align with current state statutes and consider a new funding formula for assigning costs to the members. This JPA was adopted in nineteen eighty-five and had been amended just once in twenty-ten. That amendment only changed the timing of invoices to the members from an annual to a semi-annual basis. These meetings did not produce any resolution on a funding formula, it would be acceptable to all the members, uh, with Ham Lake being the only dissenter to an agreement. After the March first, twenty twenty-three meeting, which included representatives from the Board of Water and Soil Resources, the D N R, and Anoka County Attorney's Office, Ham Lake remained resolute in their position on the funding formula and the requirements for ratification of the proposed annual budget. Ham Lake's stance on this matter was unchanged, even as attorneys made clear at our March meeting that the state law prohibits requiring unanimous ratification of budgets. Minnesota statutes one oh three B two eleven, sub D one C states decisions by a joint powers board may not require more than a majority vote, except a decision on capital improvements projects, which may require no more than a two-thirds vote. The funding formula still remains a point of contention. The most recent Ham Lake council meeting reaffirmed that their city will only accept one option. The three other municipalities have considered that option at length, and none have accepted it. Columbus, East Bethel, and Linwood committee members are of the opinion that we proceed with the JPA amendments as agreed upon by the majority of the JPA members. Due to the issues above, the eight thousand dollars in legal fees budgets for this matter have been expended, and additional four thousand dollars are needed to finalize the agreement. Columbus has already proposed and received authorization from their city council to contribute another thousand dollars toward the attorney's fees to finalize the JPA amendments. It has been requested that East Bethel, Linwood, and Ham Lake consider the same one thousand dollar authorization from their councils and town board to enable the JPA amendments to move forward and allow the preparation of the twenty twenty-four Sunrise River WMO budget by the end of May twenty twenty-three. Eight thousand dollars, as previously mentioned, is included in the twenty twenty-two Sunrise River WMO budget to complete this task, but due to the concerns by the City of Ham Lake with the funding formula and the members' annual contributions and votes for the budget approvals, an additional four thousand dollars in legal costs for this matter will be required to conclude the work. The cost will be a contribution of one thousand dollars from Columbus, East Bethel, Ham Lake, and Linwood. The additional contribution of a thousand dollars from each member does not get us past Ham Lake's objection, but it will enable the completion of the JPA amendments and have this step completed to expedite the preparation of the twenty twenty-four budget. This additional allocation is a cost that will be incurred either at this time or at some future date. The approval of this allocation by Columbus, East Bethel, and Linwood puts the burden of this matter back in Ham Lake's domain and shows our collective effort to come to some resolution on the JPA amendments. The city of Ham Lake has stated they will consider opting out of the Sunrise River WMO unless there's a change in the funding formula that lowers their cost. However, it is unlikely that this is an option for them, as there's no sentiment on the Anoka County's behalf to take over their WMO area, and the Bureau of Water and Soil Resources has given indication that they are not favorable to consideration of their exit. Staff is seeking direction as to the request for an additional one thousand dollar allocation to the Sunrise River WMO to pay additional legal fees to complete the Sunrise River WMO JPA amendments.
I'm amazed by how intractable Ham Lake has been. I mean, it's amazing.
It's, uh, it's, it's costing all of us a lot more money. The, the options are, is if they don't go this way, and they choose to fight it, the four-member WMO may have to be dissolved and turned into a three-member WMO, which means we'd have to do another set of JPAs, which will increase their costs more, so. We think, hopefully, by putting some additional pressures on Ham Lake that they may come around. I have been told, though, that they will be sending their mayor and the councilperson to the next Sunrise River WMO meeting.
April sixth.
Something they haven't done in the past. They've usually only had citizen representatives, and we think that, you know, ma- maybe the right message didn't get back to the city council, so it's been brought out at the last meeting.
Seems like a good move.
One, one of the problems we had with them is you're not sending the right people to the meeting, so. They're gonna be here next week.
April sixth.
April sixth. So, hopefully, we can get something done and move past this, but in order to complete this, we need another. In order to complete this, we need another, the Sunrise River WMO needs another four thousand dollars to be split equally among the four members, and that's what they're requesting we provide or authorize tonight.
You looking for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make one. Do we approve the thousand dollars?
Motion made. Is there a second? I'll second it. Um, just as a matter of forediscussion, uh, the last meeting that we were at, uh, Ham Lake thought they could get out, but Bowser told them, no, the county doesn't want them. Coon Creek Watershed doesn't want them, so I, and you have to be in a watershed. So I think one way or another, they're gonna get, they're gonna be in on this. They're just, they're just, like you said, they're costing us more money. They're costing the other three cities a lot more money, so.
It seems a strange thing to dig your heels in over it.
And I mean, they only pay a small, small thing, like three thousand bucks a year or so. But to the original motion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Uh, staff reports.
I have nothing else to add, Tim.
Jim?
Yeah, Jack, I got a question for you. Last meeting, March thirteenth, Ms. Murphy handed us all a little packet here of information on her situation. And it's, it's, it's a small one, but everything in there, I asked you for information on this, and here's this thick one that you gave me. None of that's in here. Why?
I think that was the, I had a green folder, and I showed you that, and I said there's a email in there with the city attorneys and my response to that, and there was found to be no basis for it. I didn't get a copy of that, so I didn't have access to that.
Okay, 'cause what's in this packet is basically emails, you going back and forth with Jill Murphy, several duplicates, so it's a waste of my time looking at this right here when there's a lot of information right here that I didn't get.
Well, I didn't get that either.
Really?
It wa- wasn't given to me.
Oh, you didn't get this?
No.
I thought she handed you a copy as well.
She did not.
Really?
No.
'Cause everything in here, I understood that the city should have, and you don't have this?
I don't have that. I did have one that was given to me secondhand back last fall. I'm assuming that may be the same thing, but I don't know.
Okay, I'll get you a copy of all this. All right, I just wanted to find out why, because I don't, I mean, all the reading I had to do in there, it made no sense compared to what I seen in here. So I'll get you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Kim?
Uh, I wanna touch base with the last meeting we had with the Parks Commission. I think it was a, a pretty good meeting. Uh, we handed out some ideas, or I did, to try and get a better vision, to try and get a better, uh, goal, to get the commission unified and, and to start thinking that there's a lot of things we could do and how to do it, and just get more input. And I wanted to say, put that out there.
Kevin?
Inspired by Tim's lead on the matter, tomorrow night I'm gonna be serving as a City Council Liaison to the Planning Commission, and I worked up a very concise little handout for them to look over and say to try to, there's an old saying, it's from the Bible, my people lack, my people perish for a lack of vision or a lack of knowledge. And I think, I think we can always spend more time as a people, the people of East Bethel, to clarify our mutual vision for our city. And the Planning Commission is a place to really, the real, the real nexus of that exercise. So I'm just putting it out there to, uh, to actively pursue defining the vision and the strategies, and most importantly of, to me, anyway, is the two-way communication with the residents of East Bethel. Anything we can do, not just to the people of East Bethel, but from the people of East Bethel to the city, uh, not only the City Council, but the staff, and enhance the quality of communication and the breadth of it and the depth of it is all to the good. 'Cause the more we all get on the same page, it's a lot easier to row the boat when you're all pulling in the same direction, you know? So, that's all I have.
Brian?
The E D A meeting was canceled for this past month. I did attend the North drunk highway sixty-five corridor collision. Uh, several interesting projects are to note. Uh, first gated out of the way. Potholes were brought up. Anoka County wants to know if there's any potholes in their county roads. So if there's any potholes in the county roads, contact Anoka County, they wanna know.
Are there any roads without potholes? It'd be a lot shorter, wouldn't it?
Um, so three more things. Uh, first project will be a resurfacing of Highway sixty-five in twenty twenty-four. That will be from County Road ten in Blaine to two hundred and seventeenth, right in East Bethel here. Where transitions to concrete. Uh, it's projected to have a forty million dollar cost on that, and with that, they will be, uh, upgrading, replacing some services. Uh, there will be, they will be replacing the box culvert at Viking. Uh, some of the prep work will start in fall of twenty twenty-three, but the, the grunt bit will be done in twenty twenty-four. On the next project, talking again about Blaine, uh, for the project going from, I believe it's ninety-ninth up to one seventeenth. Um, Blaine has a project that they want to do on Highway sixty-five in that span to laminate traffic lights, uh, make traffic flow a lot easier. They finally have a preliminary layout plan. They brought it with. It, uh, is about twenty feet long to encompass all the intersections. And it was very, very interesting. Uh, that will be presented. They will be coming to our town hall in the spring. They will bring that preliminary plan for residents to see so that they know what's going on down in that area. Uh, June and July, uh, they hope to have the final approval, the preliminary plan from MinDOT. Uh, currently, they have forty-two million dollars raised, and they're looking at a hundred and thirty million more to have the project totally funded. Uh, they're looking at different funding opportunities, including going to Washington to get some federal grants. Uh, to, as far as the timeframe when this will happen, the earliest, if everything fell into line, would be twenty twenty-five, the earliest, so it's more likely gonna be twenty-six or twenty-seven. But there's serious money being thrown at this project, and it will happen in some way, shape, or form, and while everybody just loves road construction, I, I think the end result for this will be very good for residents, East Bethel residents commuting on Highway sixty-five. Uh, one other note to make, our neighbors to the north, Athens, has rezoned their Highway sixty-five corridor for commercial. Uh, previously, it was more spot zoning where you couldn't have commercial unless you had commercial next to you. That was the way that commercial spread. It was something with those arrangements. Uh, with this, they opened the whole thing up for commercial, and they're having a one-year moratorium on it so that they can get all their ducks in the rows and get everything in order. So I, I found that that to be, uh, a very interesting change for Athens. So that is my report for Highway sixty-five. Thank you, Brian.
I just have one thing here. I got a letter today from Jasmine Putney from the Arbor Day Foundation. First of all, I wanna say thanks to the City of East Bethel and thanks to the Parks Commission. It says here, East Bethel was named a twenty twenty-two Tree City USA by Arbor Day Foundation to honor its commitment to effective urban forest management. So thank you very much. Will you pass that on, Nate?
Absolutely.
And with that, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made second, discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.